Good morning. The June 2nd, 2021, meeting of the Anarongo County Council is now in session. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Ms. Lacy.
Present.
Ms. Pickard.
Present.
Mr. Volkey.
Present.
Mr. Pruski.
Here.
Ms. Fiedler.
Present.
Ms. Radvian. Ms. Radvian, you were noted. Ms. Hare.
Present.
Ms. Bowler, our county auditor.
Present.
Madam Chair, we have seven council members and our county auditor present.
Thank you. Today, we begin final deliberations on the FY22 proposed budget for Anarongo County. We will start by hearing from the county auditor, after which we will take a recess and then come back together to hear a rebuttal from the administration. At this time, please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Pruski?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I'm gonna start with the prayer first. I'd like to recognize, first of all, this Memorial Day weekend that we just commemorated all the folks that we certainly lost for this country. But also, as we move into June, we have Juneteenth, June, Juneteenth, celebrating on Saturday, June 19th. And as you know, in our country, we obviously have a lot of sacrifices and want to make sure that we move towards a more perfect union. And this sometimes happens through justice or injustice. And I would just like to take a moment of silence to recognize those two holidays. Both of them are historical. And if we could just take a moment again to think about all those that have sacrificed to make our country a better place. Thank you, Madam Chair. The Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Pruski. And now, Madam Auditor, will receive your recommendations on the operating and capital budgets.
Thank you. Laura's gonna play a pre-recorded video for you guys.
Before I get that started, everybody, just make sure you're muted. You may want to turn off your video as well, and I will push play in just a moment here.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the council. I am Michelle Bowler, county auditor. I'm here to provide our comments on the county executives' proposed fiscal year 2022 operating budget and capital budget and program. I would first like to thank the team from the auditor's office, who is here virtually with me today. Our comments and recommendations before you would not be possible without their dedication and hard work. I started in my new role on April 1st, and they have all stepped up and helped to make this as smooth as possible with quite a challenging timeline. Our team includes Terry Gibson, whose leadership has been instrumental in our success this year, Jennifer Mackey, Sayed Takvi, Joshua Parsley, Phil Demick, Catherine Holmes, Karen House, and Alana Schulman. Phyllis Clancy helped with the capital projects review, and we always appreciate her experience and expertise. I would also like to note that Karen and Alana started on April 29th. I appreciate their patience and diligence and all members of our office for working together to bring you this presentation this morning. I would also like to thank department management and staff and the Office of Budget, who have been answering our many questions over the past few weeks. Specifically, I would like to thank Ms. Corby and Mr. Trumbauer. While we have worked together in the past, it is the first budget for all three of us in our new roles, and their help and collaboration has been invaluable. The first part of my presentation includes my general comments on the budget and its contents. After that, I will move on to our recommendations for reductions to the budget. On May 4th, the Spending Affordability Committee delivered its report to council, which provided its recommendations for FY22 spending and general debt, general fund debt limit. I have provided calculations in my presentation showing that the proposed budget exceeds the recommended spending limit by 37.2 million. However, the county is within the recommended general fund debt limit. The $37.2 million is 2.2% of adjusted recommended spending. I also provided the past five years of Spending Affordability Committee recommendations as compared to the general fund spending in the proposed operating budget. For FY22, the general fund appropriation limit is calculated as follows. The recommended FY22 general fund spending of $1,714,87,050 is added to the available general fund balance of $114,225,200 and the contribution to the Revenue Reserve Fund of $11 million. This totals to the adjusted recommended FY22 spending of $1,839,312,250. The general fund spending per proposed FY22 operating budget is $1,876,518,000. The proposed FY22 spending in excess of the Spending Affordability Committee recommendation is $37,205,750. The Spending Affordability Committee recommended FY22 general fund debt limit is $1,722,551,438. The estimated outstanding general fund debt at the end of FY22 is $1,548,439,585. Therefore, the proposed FY22 debt less than the Spending Affordability Committee recommended limit is $174,111,853. For debt affordability, I want to acknowledge the work that the administration has done to reflect reasonable out-year spending when reviewing the debt affordability. In the proposed capital budget overview on pages one and three, the administration presented its debt affordability analyses showing that the proposed capital budget and program is within the county's established guidelines. On page one of the capital budget overview, the administration analyzes the CIP as an average of $170 million per year and calculates the debt ratios using the $170 million. On page three, the administration calculates the debt ratios using the actual bonds in the program. The average capital program for the next six years is $160.8 million, which is just below the average capital program cost over the last seven years, which was approximately $161 million. This shows that the county is still within its debt guidelines using reasonable out-year capital program amounts. During my analysis this year, I have done some long-range projections of these ratios considering the reality of what I see happening in the CIP. Let me give some background. Beginning in FY16, the county approved paying back new debt issues over 30 years. This allowed the county to put additional and larger projects into the CIP while staying within our debt affordability, because the payments of the debt are stretched over a longer period of time. Also, that year, the administration increased some of the debt guidelines, which meant, which means that the county would use more of its resources to pay debt. The administration's current guideline for debt service expenditures as a percentage of the general fund revenue is 11.5%. This guideline has increased several times in the past 20 to 25 years, from 6% to the current 11.5%. Prior, the county's financial advisor has generally advised the counties keep this guideline around 10% and that the guideline should not go any higher than 11.5%. With the proposed CIP, the county stays within these guidelines over the, the next six years of the program. I have prepared long-range projections using the budget office's assumptions, but I also added a second scenario that includes a 5% CIP growth, which reflect the average CIP growth that the county has experienced over the last 20 years. This slide shows a table with the debt statistics projected out past the first six years. In scenario one, I use the CIP as the proposed and project the far-out years, assuming that growth in capital expenses keeps pace with revenue growth at 3.5%. I've shown the statistics in five-year increments. The county would stay within all of its guidelines through FY50, except for debt per capita. However, it is important to note, as Mr. Hasim mentioned in his presentation on debt affordability, this needs to be changed periodically, because it is inflationary. In scenario two, I use all of the same assumptions, except I assume a 5% growth in capital expenses, which reflects the average growth in the CIP over the last 20 years. As you see, the debt service as a percent of revenue and debt as a percentage of full value guidelines are reached by 2045. The main point of this scenario is to show that growing the capital program at pace with revenue growth long-term is better to stay within the guidelines than a capital program growing faster than revenue. Of course, we cannot accurately predict that far into the future, because there are numerous factors that could change these projections. However, I continue to urge the administration and the council to limit the debt load at a level that keeps the debt statistics flat. The more tools that have been used to expand the capital program, including paying debt back over 30 years and using the PPI fund, mean that fewer tools may be available to future administrations and councils. My capital recommendations later in this presentation will reduce the proposed CIP, and I hope you will consider our suggestions. During the Spending Affordability Committee slide, I referenced the Revenue Reserve Fund, and I want to give a little more detail about this fund. The FY22 operating budget requested transfer of $11 million to the Revenue Reserve Fund. Bill 2521 increased the revenue fund balance limit from 5% to 6%. The Revenue Reserve Fund balance cannot exceed 6% of general fund revenues. Based on the estimated FY22 revenue the reserve is capped at $105,737,500. Currently, the balance is approximately $83.4 million, and we project the FY21 balance will be approximately $83.5 million. With the $11 million planned in FY22 and the projected interest, we estimate the reserve will be approximately $95.5 million at the end of FY22, $10.2 million short of the new 6% cap. We have reviewed the administration's estimates for revenue in all operating funds and concur with the estimates within a reasonable margin. As with FY21, though not nearly to the same extent, there are many unknowns as to what FY22 will hold. I am not an economist, but based on our reviews performed, the assumptions used by the administration seem reasonable. For property taxes, as you know, the administration has set the property tax rate at .933 per $100 of assessed value and .559 for the city of Annapolis. This year, as is county policy, the county has maximized its rate under the tax cap. For income taxes, the administration has projected an overall increase in income taxes of $58 million, $58,200,000 over last year's original budget. However, this is only $17,200,000 over the revised budget of $630,200,000. This increase is based on an estimated personal income growth of 2.5%. The most recent income tax distributions indicate that the county will exceed this revised budgeted amount. At this stage, while there are still so many unknowns as to any lingering impact of the pandemic, we agree with the administration's conservative approach. For recordation and transfer taxes, we believe that the administration's estimate for FY21 recordation and transfer taxes is low, and we believe that the projections for FY22 are also understated. We have the advantage of including another two or three months of actual activity to estimate the FY21 amounts and can see that we have already exceeded the administration's FY21 estimate. We project $143 million in FY21 compared to the estimate of $120 million. However, we do not believe the current level of recordation and transfer taxes is sustainable over time, and we have no way of knowing when that might suddenly change. Therefore, we would not recommend any higher level of revenue to be projected as recurring revenue. For tax rates, along with the submitted annual budget and appropriation ordinance, the administration included, introduced several bills to establish tax rates that will provide the revenue to fund the proposed FY22 budget appropriations. Bills 3321 through 4121 and Bill 44-21 established tax rates for the special taxing districts, special community benefit districts, shore erosion control districts, waterway improvement districts, the county property taxpayers, the city of Annapolis, and the city of Highland Beach. We have reviewed the calculation of the rates and agree the rates will generate revenue to support the FY22 appropriation request in the ABAO. Now I will discuss the operating budget. The FY22 budget proposes to appropriate $12 million for contingencies. This slide shows the amounts appropriated in the contingency account for the last five years. This fund is used for additional appropriation requests. Historically, this account included the cost of snow removal and storm damage, but was also the funding source of many unanticipated needs during the FY20 and FY21 years due to the COVID-19 pandemic. The pay increases for county groups vary, and for your reference, this slide summarizes the pay increases provided to county employee groups, the library, the community college, and the teachers. The FY22 budget includes 33 new general fund positions, 16 new childcare fund positions, two new solid waste fund positions, and one new self-insurance fund position. Appendix B provides a summary of the new positions and the estimated impact of these positions, including recurring costs such as salary and benefits, and one-time costs such as computers and desks. The American Rescue Plan Act of 2021, ARPA, funds are programmed in the FY22 budget for the following programs. The CAO has community grants of $1.8 million. The CAO also has pay-go to the CIP for $4 million. This is water and wastewater infrastructure projects that are specified as an eligible use of ARPA funding, and this is using that funding to help maximize ratepayer funding. The Circuit Court Jury Office for $56,800. This is for temporary staff support for the current case backlog and technology updates. The Fire Department Advanced Life Support Program for $1,765,800. This increases the number of firefighters in the paramedic training program from 14 to 42. These are existing employees that will be unable to work while they are attending classes that occur during their assigned shift. Therefore, the majority of the cost of this program is related to overtime. The use of ARPA funding is to increase the number of trained paramedics in a shorter period of time. The Health Department Public Health Emerging Pathogens Response Program for $5 million. This is a placeholder to continue the Health Department's work effort related to COVID-19 for work that was largely previously funded by CARES Act funds. The Health Department Mental Health Agency Support Alternative Shelter for $1,817,600. This program supports individuals who need to quarantine because of COVID-19 but cannot use other alternative shelters due to mental health issues, substance abuse disorders, or their recent release from prison. This program was also previously funded by CARES Act funds. Social Services Emergency Alternative Shelter for $1,587,200. This program supports individuals who are COVID-19 positive but need shelter due to either homelessness or inability to isolate at home. This was previously funded by CARES Act funds. Recreation and Parks Childcare Fund Support for $2,147,800. This is a general off due to COVID-19 operations. This slide shows the departments in the FY22 budget that have placeholders for potential future ARPA funding. The FY22 proposed budget follows the county's reevaluated Other Post-Employment Benefits, OPEB, policy. The following methods and assumptions were used to determine the actuarial determined contribution, ADC. 6.3% discount long-term investment return rates, 90% target funded levels, 20-year target period to reach the goal level, which is July 1st, 2040, open group valuation, including future hires, 3% payroll growth. Based on the OPEB annual report as of June 30th, 2020, the county's total OPEB liability is $826 million, and the asset was $249 million. This leaves a net OPEB liability of $577 million. The estimate from the actuarial consultant as to the impact of the changes in assumptions in it, calculating the ADC, is the, is that the $829 million liability will become $860 million in FY21. This budget includes $27.4 million towards funding the accrued liability and an additional $20 million of one-time funding from the general fund, bringing the estimated funding to 35%. We wanted to show this graph to show the remaining liability and how important it is to continue to fund this liability. To further emphasize this importance, the next slide, this slide shows why we need to fund OPEB now, because later. These are the estimated benefit payments for the next 10 years. To fund this liability sooner rather than later, the county can then utilize investment returns to help fund future benefit costs. I have reviewed the Board of Education's budget and have reconciled the county executive's request to the schedules provided by the board that present the superintendent's and board's requests. I will point out that the board estimates it will use $15.3 million of fund balance in its budget next year. This slide shows the FY22 requested appropriation as compared to the maintenance of effort and the prior five years of maintenance of effort required as compared to the budgeted appropriation. In the proposed operating budget, the water and sewage rates and other capital, and other operating rates do not change in FY22. The environmental protection fee and water and sewer capital facility connection charges will increase in accordance with the rates established in the code. The administration's projections in their rate model for water and sewer usage rates show that although no increase to the rate is required in FY22, rate increases of 5% will be needed in FY24 and FY25. In FY21, these increases were projected to begin in FY23. However, due to the addition of ARPA funds as pay-go to the capital projects, the rate increase has been delayed until FY24. The solid waste fee increases in FY22 to $341 per resident to be able to maintain the targeted fund balance of 10% of operating expenses. Now I will move on to our recommendations. For the operating budget, there are different types of cuts that we recommend. The first is when the requested items do not total the budgeted amount. We also make recommendations to reduce the appropriation when there are no programmatic changes with the historical expenditures are not reaching the budgeted amount. We evaluated the support and explanations provided and have noted when a recommendation is due to lack of support. There are other types of recommendations that we describe in more detail during the following slides. I am now going to go through our recommendations for the proposed operating budget by department and by fund, starting with the general fund. In the Office of Central Services for Facilities Management, the gas and natural, natural and propane gas budgets and actual costs have, on average, been decreasing historically. As a result, Central Services reduced its object's budgeted amount of $698,700 in FY21 by 7% to request a budget amount of $650,000 for FY22. However, actual costs have not crossed $625,000 since FY18 and have been decreasing since then. We recommend revising the budget amount to $630,000 based on the declining costs. Our calculated estimate considered the actual expenditures for FY20 plus inflation and weather volatility. This method was used due to the billing issues with the gas vendor in FY21, which have subsequently been resolved. We recommend reducing gas, natural gas and propane by $20,000. For other professional services, this object is appropriated to provide contractual security guard services at various county buildings and for document scanning. The FY22 budget request is $1,316,100, of which one building location, Commerce Park, has an estimated budget of $179,200. Central Services anticipated that the county would take occupancy starting May 1st, 2021, and based its estimate on 250 working days in FY22 and three armed guards providing 9.5 hours of coverage each working day at $25.07 per hour per guard. However, Central Services provided us with an update that occupancy has not yet taken place at Commerce Park due to construction still ongoing. At best, the county expects to take occupancy by August 1st, 2021. Considering the revised move-in date, lease commencement date, we anticipate that security guard services would not begin until August 15th, 2021. This would result in a reduction of 31 working days, $22,000. We recommend reducing the budget by $22,000 at Commerce Park to reflect Central Services' reduced need of security guard services. For county facility repair and renovation, this object has a requested FY22 budget of $800,000 for county facility repair and renovation, which is an increase of $500,000 from the FY21 budget. Central Services failed to provide a list of needed repairs and renovations along with cost estimates. According to Central Services, the project list is developed over time as the fiscal year progresses, even though we have been provided with a project list in the past. Annual expenditures range from $153,800 in FY22 to a high of $539,000. to a high of five hundred thirty-nine thousand dollars, five, five hundred thirty-nine, five hundred dollars in FY nineteen. Based on historical expenditures and the lack of central services justifying an increased need, we recommend reducing the FY twenty-two budget of eight hundred thousand dollars to six hundred thousand dollars. We recommend reducing county facility repair and renovation by two hundred thousand dollars. This leaves an increase of three hundred thousand dollars for existing and new facility repairs and renovations. For space and real estate rentals, this is in the Real Estate Bureau. The FY twenty-two request of one million seven hundred and eight thousand eight hundred dollars for space and real estate rentals consists of rent, monthly operating expenses, and property taxes related to five properties. One of these five properties is Commerce Park, which Central Services budgeted one million thirteen thousand seven hundred dollars. Per the lease agreement for Commerce Park, rent costs began, began six months after the lease commencement date. Central Services anticipated a lease commencement date starting May first, twenty twenty-one. However, as just noted, Central Services provided us with an update that occupancy has not taken place at Commerce Park due to construction still ongoing. At best, the county expects to take occupancy by August first, twenty twenty-one. Considering the revised move-in date, lease commencement date, we anticipate that the first rent payment will begin on February first, twenty twenty-two. Therefore, the total rent for Commerce Park for FY twenty-two should be about six hundred thirty-three thousand six hundred dollars. We recommend reducing the budgeted rent for Commerce Park by three hundred and eighty thousand dollars. We recommend reducing space and real estate rentals by three hundred and eighty thousand dollars. For the Office of Finance, non-departmental consultant expense related to debt service, this object is used to pay financial services related to debt service, bond sales, and for bond sale legal services as well as other small bond-related costs. Finance, non-departmental's FY twenty-two budget request is five hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars. Finance's budget estimate contained duplicate consultant expenses related to costs and fees for annual bond sale activity for the Water and Wastewater Debt Service, which is separately budgeted in the Water and Wastewater Sinking Fund. As a result, this caused an overestimate of consultant fees totaling one hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. We recommend eliminating the duplicate budgeted funds. A similar situation occurred with the Water and Wastewater Debt Service budget. We recommend reducing consultants for this bureau by one hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. In the Office of Transportation, Other Services category, this object has a requested FY twenty-two budget of three point three million dollars for paratransit services for seniors and adult disabled clients eighteen years of age and older throughout the county. This is an increase of three hundred thousand dollars from the FY twenty-one budget. Transportation failed to provide a contract supporting the three point three million dollar budget request. Instead, the only documentation Transportation provided was an agreement stating that the county will pay up to one point five one million five hundred fifteen thousand nine hundred ninety dollars for calendar year twenty twenty-one. According to Transportation, they have a standing practice to budget the maximum of the agreed-upon contract amount. If we follow Transportation's practice of budgeting the maximum agreed-upon contract amount, we would recommend a cut of approximately one million seven hundred eighty-four thousand dollars. Instead of taking an aggressive cut to these transit services due to a lack of adequate support, we recommend reducing the FY twenty-two budget to three million dollars. We recommend reducing Other Services by three hundred thousand dollars. This removes the increase of the budget from FY twenty-one to FY twenty-two. In the Department of Public Works General Fund, in the Bureau of Highways for Object seven seven one seven for streetlights. Streetlights' actual costs have been decreasing historically due to the reduction in monthly energy usage and maintenance costs associated with LED streetlight fixtures. As a result, Public Works reduced Streetlights' budgeted amount of five million dollars in FY twenty-one by five percent to request a budget amount of four million seven hundred fifty thousand dollars for FY twenty-two. However, actual costs on average have been declining at a higher percentage. We recommend revising the FY twenty-two budget amount to reduce it by an additional one hundred thousand dollars, a seven percent budget decline from FY twenty-one. Our calculated estimate considered the actual expenditures for FY twenty-one plus inflation and energy volatility. In the Department of Recreation and Parks for Object seven eight oh nine Other Services in the Recreation Bureau, this object includes expenditures related to bus transportation for summer program participants and year-round programs. Recreation and Parks requested a budget of four hundred and twenty thousand six hundred dollars for FY twenty-two. Recreation and Parks failed to provide a detailed cost breakdown and supporting documentation to and create the budget request. Recreation and Parks only noted that the requested amount is based on the number of camps offered, the participants, and the field trips planned. Annual expenditures range from two hundred and ten thousand five hundred dollars in FY seventeen to a high of two hundred and nine eight thousand hundred dollars in FY eighteen. Based on historical expenditures, we recommend reducing the FY twenty-two budget of four hundred and twenty thousand six hundred dollars to three hundred and twenty-five thousand six hundred dollars. We recommend reducing Other Services by ninety-five thousand dollars. In the Fire Department, Personal Services category, Special Pays for FICA. This object is appropriated to capture the FICA cost for Objects seventy thirteen Special Pays and seventy forty Overtime. The Fire Department's FICA estimate, estimate was calculated in error, which resulted in overestimate totaling three, thirty-two thousand dollars in the budget request of eight hundred and fifteen, three hundred dollars. We recommend eliminating the overage error in the estimated calculation. In the Department of Detention Facilities, Personal Services, Object seventy nineteen, which is turnover. This object is calculated to determine the savings projected to occur in the Personal Services category due to vacancies. The administration included a turnover amount of two million six hundred eight thousand six hundred dollars or four point six five of the Personal Services category. We determined this object should be increased further, a further four hundred thousand dollars, increasing turnover to five point four nine percent of Personal Services based on the historical actual turnover rate and the number of department vacancies. We recommend increasing the turnover request of two million two hundred eight thousand six hundred dollars by four hundred thousand dollars to get close to the lowest historic turnover percentage based on the period of fiscal year twenty seventeen through twenty twenty-one. You can see this on the charts to help provide a little bit more information about why we're making this recommendation. Also, in the Department of Detention Facilities and Management Services, this object is appropriated to provide security services, polygraph testing for new employees, and criminal history background checks. During the administration's budget formulation, the Detention Center budgeted approximately twenty-five thousand dollars for contractual security services related to hospital details. However, the Detention Center did not realize that the security services would need to be negotiated with the union, which they explained is unlikely to occur in FY twenty-one, twenty-two. We recommend reducing the Management Services budget request of four hundred and eighty-one thousand six hundred dollars by twenty-five thousand dollars to eliminate the excess funds. In the Department of Public Life libraries salaries and wages. The Public Library did not have an agreement with its affiliated foundation to delineate the structure of the relationship between the library and foundation for key areas such as financial support, purchases, ethics, and investments. The library's affiliated foundation was created in two thousand and six by the Library Board of Trustees to provide the Public Library with financial assistance for special collections and special projects, which cannot be realized through the basic funding of the Public Library as provided by the state of Maryland and Anne Rundle County. According to the Public Library, it paid the salaries and benefits for five of its employees to support the affiliated foundation, which totaled about three hundred thousand dollars in FY twenty-one. The library's FY twenty-two fourteen million seven hundred sixty-two thousand eight hundred dollar budget request of its salaries and wages includes about four hundred and twenty thousand dollars for four of its employees to support the affiliated foundation. Establishing a formal agreement between the library and its affiliated foundation is a recommended best practice for an entity-affiliated foundation relationship. This is evident in the state of Maryland's Office of Legislative Audits, relatively recent audit findings between an entity and its affiliated foundation relationship. We recommend the Public Library's budget request of salaries and wages to support its affiliated foundation totaling four hundred and twenty thousand dollars be withheld until the Public Library develops a comprehensive agreement with its affiliated foundation addressing key areas as mentioned, and the Office of the County Auditor determines that the Public Library has established an adequate agreement. In the Office of the Sheriff for Salaries and Wages, the Sheriff's Office salary estimate for the Deputy Sheriff one and Deputy Sheriff corporal positions were calculated in error, which resulted in an overestimate to its seven million one hundred sixty-four thousand one hundred dollar budget request totaling sixty-eight thousand dollars. We recommend eliminating the excess budget by reducing salaries and wages by sixty-eight thousand dollars. In the Recreation and Parks Childcare Fund for Personal Services in the Insurance object, this object includes the insurance benefit costs medical and dental. The FY twenty-two request of three hundred and twenty-one thousand eight hundred dollars erroneously included a duplicate of the budget insurance cost of one hundred and twenty thousand dollars for the sixteen new positions, fifteen converted childcare directors, and one new childcare program specialist. We recommend eliminating the excess budget of one hundred and twenty thousand dollars. For Contractual FICA, this object includes FICA expenses for the contractual positions. The FY twenty-two budget request for contractual pay is four million one hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars. So the contractual FICA should be approximately three hundred and twenty thousand one hundred dollars. Recreation and Parks erroneously calculated the budgeted amount at three hundred and fifty-two thousand eight hundred dollars. We recommend eliminating the excess budget of thirty-two thousand dollars. In Supplies and Materials for Object three, eight, three, three, one, Other Supplies and Materials, this object provides for games, educational kits, food service utensils, plates, and other items. The FY twenty-two budget request is six hundred and thirty-four thousand three hundred dollars. According to Recreation and Parks, the FY twenty-two calculated request is based on FY nineteen expenditures, which is pre-COVID, and the estimated costs associated with the ten new additional childcare sites. We recalculated Recreation and Parks FY twenty-two estimate, which totaled about eighty-six thousand dollars less than the budget request. Instead of recommending an eighty-six thousand dollar reduction to the overestimated budget request, we added inflation and a buffer to recommend a reduction of fifty-five thousand dollars. In the Grant Special Revenue Fund, this is related to Bureau four six sixty, which is disposition of litigation. In the Pension Object, this object is used to pay the employer contributions to the Pension Trust Fund for employees under the Circuit Court Grant Account. The budgeted amount is set by the actuary each fiscal year. A reconciliation between the pension budget and the pension totals set by the actuary disclosed that the pension was erroneously budgeted one hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars more than the amount set by the actuary. We recommend eliminating the error in this object. We recommend reducing the pension budget of three hundred and thirty-nine thousand four hundred dollars by one hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars. For the Waste Collection Fund in the Turnover Category, this object is calculated to determine the savings projected to occur in the Personal Services category due to vacancies. The administration included a turnover amount of two hundred and thirty-five thousand eight hundred dollars or two point five six of the total personal services for FY twenty-two. As of May twentieth, twenty twenty-one, this fund had nine vacancies, of which eight, which eight are in various stages of the hiring process, and one is pending reclassification. We recommend increasing the FY twenty-two turnover by fifty thousand dollars to three point one five percent for a total of two hundred and eighty-five thousand eight hundred dollars. Our recommendation considers the historical turnover rate and the number of department vacancies. In the Unanticipated Needs Object for the Waste Collection Fund, this fund's FY twenty-two budget for unanticipated needs is three hundred thousand dollars. Although Public Works stated that budgeting for unanticipated needs has been a longstanding practice in which funding gets reallocated to various objects as part of budget adjustments, this use of funding as a contingency removes the council's oversight. In addition, Public Works has other budgeted built-in allowances within its other objects of this fund that could be used for unanticipated needs. We recommend deleting unanticipated needs to subject this fund to the same oversight the council practices with using contingencies in the General Fund. For the Water and Wastewater Sinking Fund, the Debt Service Contractual Services for Consultants. This object is used to pay financial services related to debt service and for bond sale legal services as well as other small bond-related costs. The fund's FY twenty-two budget request is three hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars. Finance's budget estimate contained duplicate consultant expenses as earlier discussed related to costs and fees for annual bond sale activity for the county's General Fund Debt Service, which is separately budgeted in the Office of Finance, non-departmental. As a result, this caused an overestimate of consultant fees totaling two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. We recommend eliminating the duplicate budgeted funds. And as I mentioned, a similar situation occurred with the county's General Fund Debt Service budget. We recommend reducing consultants by two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. In the Water and Wastewater Operating Fund, this is another object of unanticipated needs. The fund's FY twenty budget for unanticipated needs is five hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Although Public Works stated that budgeting for unanticipated needs has been a longstanding practice needed to be able to actively respond to emergency situations in which funding gets reallocated to various objects as a part of budget adjustments, as we saw in the Solid Waste Fund. This use of funding as a contingency removes the council's oversight. In addition, the Public Works has other budgeted built-in allowances within other objects of this fund that could be used for unanticipated needs. We recommend deleting unanticipated needs to subject this fund to the same oversight the council practices with using contingencies in the General Fund. I just wanted to bring to your attention that we have two reconciling items, but these will probably change as there are other amendments, and it doesn't change the amount of funding available. It's to true up within the budget for the different items that are happening. The first is Pay as You Go. Pay as You Go is the use of general funds to support capital projects rather than borrowing funds. The Finance, non-departmental's budget for Pay as You Go is sixty-five million dollars. We recommend reducing Pay as You Go by five million forty-eight thousand dollars to reflect total pay-go reductions in the capital budget. The second is the Impact Fee Special Revenue Fund. This recommendation is to reduce the amount appropriated in the Impact Fee Special Revenue Fund to correspond with the impact fee amounts that show as revenue in the Capital Projects Fund. We recommend reducing that total amount by fifteen million dollars. Now I will go through our recommendations for the proposed capital budget. This year, I will handle these recommendations a little differently. We worked closely with the department management and the staff and the Office of the Budget regarding questions and open items and more. Able to find quite a lot of consensus even prior to making our recommendations here today. I want to thank everyone involved for supporting this initiative. This first group of recommendations have already been agreed upon by the administration. We'll start with the Board of Education. In All-Day K and Pre-K, this project provides for permanent facility space to accommodate all-day kindergarten at all elementary schools and pre-kindergarten at certain elementary schools. The amount of IAC funding available for FY twenty-two is two million five hundred ninety-three thousand dollars more than the budget request. And the amount of IAC funding available for FY twenty-three is two million five hundred ninety-three thousand dollars less than the budget request. To correct the amount of IAC funding available, we recommend increasing the FY twenty-two IAC funding by two million five hundred ninety-three dollars, reducing the FY twenty-three IAC funding by two million five hundred ninety-three dollars, and increase the FY twenty-three general county bonds by two million five hundred ninety-three dollars. In Building Systems Renovation, this project provides for matching projected state funds for approved systemic building component replacement projects at various schools. The amount of IAC funding available for FY twenty-two is two million two hundred seventy-six thousand nine hundred thirty-eight The amount of IAC funding available for F Y twenty-two is two million two hundred seventy-six thousand nine hundred thirty-eight dollars more than the budget request. To correct the amount of IAC funding available, we recommend increasing the F Y twenty-two IAC funding by two million two hundred seventy-six thousand nine hundred thirty-eight dollars. For relocatable classrooms. This project provides for relocatable classrooms to provide adequate programmatic space and or reduce class size. A portion of this project is eligible to be funded by education impact fees District Seven and impact fee funds are available for this project. We recommend reducing the general fund pay-go by one hundred and eighty thousand dollars and replacing it with education impact fees for District Seven. If the council chooses to replace the funding for this project, the administration will need to request the impact fee funding in the supplemental budget. For aging schools. This project provides support for a state initiative to assist school districts in accomplishing necessary repair or maintenance projects. The amount of grant funding available for F Y twenty-two is thirty-four thousand dollars less than the budget request. To correct the amount of grant funding available, we recommend reducing the grant funding by thirty-four thousand dollars and increasing the F Y. Twenty-two general county bonds by thirty-four thousand dollars. Athletic stadium improvements. This project provides for design and construction funding for athletic facility enhancements. The amount of grant funding available for F Y twenty-two is one hundred thousand dollars more than the budget request. To correct the amount of grant funding available, we recommend increasing other state grants by one hundred thousand dollars. Old Mill West High School. This project provides for a new high school within the Old Mill feeder zone. A portion of this project is eligible to be funded by education impact fees District Five and impact fee funds are available for this project. We recommend reducing the general fund pay-go by one point three million dollars and replacing it with education impact fees District Five. If the council chooses to replace the funding for this project, the administration will need to request the impact fee funding in the. Fundamental budget. Quarterfield Elementary School. This project provides for replacement school for Quarterfield Elementary School. The amount of IAC funding available for F Y twenty-two is two million two hundred eighty-eight thousand dollars more than the budget request. The amount of IAC funding available for F Y twenty-three is two million two hundred eighty-eight thousand dollars less than the budget request. To correct the amount of IAC funding available, we recommend increasing the F Y twenty-two IAC funding by two million two hundred eighty-eight thousand dollars. And reducing the F Y twenty-two pay-go by two million two hundred eighty-eight thousand dollars. We also recommend reducing the F Y twenty-three IAC funding by two million two hundred eighty-eight thousand dollars. And increasing F Y twenty-three general county bonds by two million two hundred eighty-eight thousand dollars. West County Elementary School. This project provides for a new elementary school within West County. The Board of Education has determined that the project funding can be reduced by eight hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. We recommend reducing F Y twenty-four general county bonds by eight hundred thirty-four thousand dollars. Benfield Elementary School. The this project. That provides for modernization of and in addition to Benfield Elementary School. The Board of Education has determined that the project funding can be reduced by forty-nine thousand dollars. We recommend reducing prior approved general county bonds by forty-nine thousand dollars. Tim's Electrical. This project provides for dedicated panels, circuits, and receptacles where needed to accommodate electrical loads associated with the F Y O one and F Y O two technology in Maryland schools. Tim's Initiative. In accordance with M S D E standards for telecommunications distribution systems at various schools. The Board of Education has determined that the project funding can be reduced by five hundred thousand dollars. The F Y twenty-two request includes a reduction of general county bonds and an offsetting increase in another. Funding source. We recommend reducing prior approved general county bonds by an additional five hundred thousand dollars. Northeast High School. This project provides for the revitalization of and in addition to Northeast High School. The Board of Education has determined that the project funding can be reduced by one hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. We recommend reducing prior approved other sources by one hundred and one thousand dollars and prior approved impact fees of fifty-three thousand dollars. High Point Elementary School. This project provides for a modernization of and in addition to High Point Elementary School. The Board of Education has determined that the project funding can be reduced by six hundred thousand dollars. We recommend reducing prior approved general county bonds by six hundred thousand dollars. George Cromwell Elementary School. This project provides for revitalization and in addition for George Cromwell Elementary School. The Board of Education has determined that the project funding can be reduced by one million dollars. We recommend reducing prior approved general county bonds by one million dollars. Jessup Elementary School. This project provides for replacement school for Jessup Elementary School. The Board of Education has determined that the project funding can be reduced by two hundred thousand dollars. We recommend reducing prior approved general county bonds by two hundred thousand dollars. Arnold Elementary School. This project provides for replacement school for Arnold Elementary School. The Board of Education has determined that the project funding can be reduced by eight hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. We recommend reducing prior approved general county bonds by eight hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Edgewater Elementary School. This project provides for revitalization and in addition for Edgewater Elementary School. The Board of Education has determined that the project funding can be reduced by one million dollars. The F Y twenty-two request includes a reduction of general county bonds and an offsetting increase in other funding sources. We recommend reducing prior approved general county bonds by an additional one million dollars. Tyler Heights Elementary School. This project provides for revitalization and in addition for Tyler Heights Elementary School. The Board of Education has determined that the project funding can be reduced by two million dollars. The F Y twenty-two request includes a reduction of general county bonds and an offsetting increase in other funding sources. We recommend reducing prior approved bonds by an additional two million dollars. Richard Henry Lee Elementary School. This project provides for revitalization and in addition for Richard Henry Lee Elementary School. The Board of Education has determined that the project funding can be reduced by one million dollars. The F Y twenty-two request includes a reduction of general county bonds and an offsetting increase in other funding sources. We recommend reducing prior approved general county bonds by an additional one million dollars. Crafton Area High School. This project provides for a new school on the proposed site adjacent to two-three-oh-one David Semble Road in Gambros, Maryland. The Board of Education has determined that the project funding can be reduced by five million dollars. The F Y twenty-two request includes a reduction of general county bonds and an offsetting increase and decrease in other funding sources. We recommend reducing prior approved general county bonds by an additional five million dollars. Now we'll move on to roads and bridges. For the Jumper's Hole Road Improvements Project. This project will design, acquire rights of way, and construct improvements along Jumper's Hole Road from Benfield Boulevard to Early Heights Kinder Road, Kinder Park. Improvements include a shared-use path along the west side, a sidewalk along the east side, and bike lanes along the road. The budget estimate developed for this project included an error that results in a reduction of eight hundred eighty-six thousand dollars in the project costs. We recommend reducing F Y twenty-five general county bonds by eight hundred eighty-six thousand dollars. For Maryland two-fourteen and Lock Haven Road. This project will design, acquire rights of way, and construct improvements consisting of an additional westbound travel lane along Maryland two-fourteen from. Maryland four-sixty-eight to east of Lock Haven Road. The budget estimate developed for this project included an error on in the construction cost estimate that results in a reduction of three hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars in the project costs. We recommend reducing F Y twenty-four general county bonds by three hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars. Route Two Improvements. This project will. Design, acquire acquire rights of way, and construct a third northbound travel lane, shoulder, and sidewalk along Maryland Route Two between U S fifty and Maryland six forty-eight. The budget estimate developed for this project included an error in the construction cost estimate that results in a reduction of six hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars in the project cost. We recommend reducing F Y twenty-four P P I bonds by six hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. Route Three Improvements. This project will design, acquire rights of way, and construct improvements along Maryland Route Three from Saint Stephen Church Road to Maryland one-seventy-five Millersville Road. By adding a third travel lane in each direction. Including shoulders and related intersection improvements where required. The budget estimate developed for this project included an error in the construction cost estimate that results in a reduction of six hundred and ninety thousand dollars in the project costs. We recommend reducing F Y twenty-four P P I bonds by six hundred and ninety thousand dollars. Oakwood and Old Mill Boulevard Roundabout. This project will design, acquire land, and construct construct a one-lane roundabout at the intersection of Oakwood Road and Old Mill Boulevard. The budget estimate developed for this project included an error that results in a reduction of one hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars in the project costs. We recommend reducing F Y twenty-four P P I bonds by one hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars. Pleasant Plains Road Safety Improvement. This project will address running off-the-road crashes along Pleasant Plains Road. The budget estimate developed for this project included an error in the construction cost estimate that results in a reduction. Action of two hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars in the project costs. We recommend reducing F Y twenty-four general county bonds by two hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars. Deval Outing Access Improvements. This project provides improved pedestrian accessibility and mobility through pedestrian infrastructure upgrades along Outing Avenue from Maryland one-seventy-seven to Deval Highway. And along Deval Highway from Outing Avenue to Maryland one-seventy-three. For better access to High Point Elementary School, George Fox Middle School, and Northeast High School. The budget estimate developed for this project included an error in the construction cost estimate that results in a reduction. Of one million three hundred fifty-three thousand dollars in the project cost. We recommend reducing F Y twenty-five P P I bonds by one million three hundred fifty-three thousand dollars. Additionally, this project is eligible to be funded by Highway Impact Fees District Two. And impact fee funds are available for this project. We recommend deleting the P P I bonds for the remainder of this project funding and replacing it with Highway Impact Fees District Two. If the council chooses to replace the funding for this project, the administration will need to request the impact fee funding in the supplemental budget. Reaver Road. At Governor Bridge Road. This project provides improvements of the at the intersection of Reaver Road at Governor Bridge Road. The construction contract for this project is significantly less than the construction amount estimated in the project budget. This results in excess project funds. Therefore, we recommend that prior approved general county bonds be reduced by one hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars. Annapolis Community, now we're starting the library class. Annapolis Community Library. This project includes funding for design, land acquisition, and construction of a new building to replace the existing library on West Street in Annapolis. The construction of the library is complete. The F Y twenty-two request includes a reduction in the project's prior approved appropriation in the amount of one million four hundred fifty-six thousand dollars. The administration has determined that the project funding can be reduced by an additional one hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars. We recommend reducing prior approved general county bonds by an additional one hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars. Recreation and Parks. For shoreline erosion control. This project is authorized to address various shoreline erosion problems in all county parks that border on the Chesapeake Bay, its tidal tributaries, and park lakes. The Fort Smallwood Park Shoreline Protection and Fort Smallwood Park Phase Three Construction Contract was awarded for about five. Four hundred and fifty thousand dollars less than the budget estimate. We recommend eliminating the excess funds. We recommend reducing F Y twenty-two bonds by four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And Dazo Athletic Fields. This project will design and construct one additional lighted multipurpose field. Basic field amenities include, but are not limited to, fencing, bleachers, scoreboards, parking, and pathways. The athletic field's construction cost estimate is approximately forty-five thousand dollars less than the prior approved budget. We would recommend eliminating the excess funds. For Quiet Waters Retreat. This project is for the acquisition of an approximately nineteen-acre parcel of property known as the Quiet Waters Retreat. Located on the South River and adjacent to the county's Quiet Waters Park. Prior approved funding, which were appropriated to acquire the Quiet Waters Retreat, are no longer needed in this project. We recommend reducing the excess funds. We recommend reducing prior approved P O S. Acquisition by one hundred and five thousand dollars and other federal grants by five thousand dollars. Next, we have the Water Quality Improvements Class. For Shipley's Choice Dam Rehab. This project consists of the removal of the failing existing dam, installation of stormwater management controls to replace those provided. By the dam, and reconstruction of the stream crossing. Through West Benfield Boulevard to prevent flooding of properties. The project is complete and is in performance. The administration revised the project cost and determined that project funding can be reduced. The proposed reduction provides for the final payment of the expected utility invoices plus contingency funds for unexpected costs. The reduced project cost results in excess project funds of two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. We recommend reducing prior approved general county bonds by two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Franklin Manor Drudging. This project funds a design, permitting, and construction associated with dredging of Franklin Manor Channel. This construction contract for this project is significantly less than the construction amount estimated in the project budget. This results in excess project funds. Therefore, we recommend the. Prior approved general county bonds be reduced by one hundred and ninety thousand dollars. In the Drudging Class. Matthias Cove and Main Creek Drudging. This project provides a design, permitting, and construction associated with dredging of Matthias Cove and Main Creek. This construction contract for this project is significantly less than the construction amount estimated in the project budget. And the project was recently completed. This results in excess project funds. Therefore, we recommend that prior approved general county bonds be reduced by one hundred thousand dollars. For watershed protection and restoration. S O P C O one, this. Project. Is for the design and construction for stormwater management infrastructure improvements necessary to comply with federal and state clean water requirements. This project includes restoration and improvements to approximately twenty-one public ponds. As of May twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one, the available balance was five hundred and five thousand dollars. Although the administration has built in contingencies within their latest cost estimates. They are also retaining an unidentified two hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars in reserve that has been set aside to accommodate future construction costs. Or to transfer to projects with insufficient funding in a future budget cycle. We recommend reducing the prior approved W P R F bonds by two hundred and thirty thousand dollars to release the excess reserve. In the Waste. Management Class. M L F R R F Subcell nine point two. This project is to design and construct Subcell nine point two of the Millersville Landfill and Resource Recovery Facility. Subcell nine point two is the second of five subcells which comprise Cell Nine. As of May twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-one, the available project balance was six million two hundred nine thousand dollars. Although the administration is de-obligating two million eight hundred and forty thousand dollars in F Y twenty-two. They advise that current forecasts show an estimated project completion cost of four million ninety-two thousand dollars less than previously estimated. Due to the project including many large contingency items based on similar prior projects. According to the administration, the project is fully functionally complete and operational, and these funds are no longer needed. We recommend reducing the prior approved solid waste bonds by an additional one million dollars. This reduction leaves contingency funds of two hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars in the project. In the Water Class. Broad Creek W T P. This project is for the planning, design, right-of-way acquisition, and construction to expand the Broad Creek W T P capacity to eight million gallons per day. Provide new raw water supply and new production wells. Subsequent to completing construction and commissioning of the Broad Creek W T P expansion described above. This project will fund the design and construction necessary to upgrade the existing facility. As of May twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-one, the available project balance was eighteen million one hundred dollars. The administration received contract bids that were lower than the budget estimate. Resulting in a nine hundred thousand dollar reduction of project costs. We recommend reducing prior approved. Water Bonds by nine hundred thousand dollars. Banbury W M Extension. This project is for the the design, right-of-way acquisition, and construction of a new water main along Banbury Road in the Gibson Island area. As of May twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-one, the available project balance was five hundred and six thousand dollars. The administration received contract bids that were lower than the budget estimate, resulting in a three hundred thousand dollar reduction of project costs. We recommend reducing prior approved water bonds by three hundred thousand dollars. This next group of recommendations are more similar to our typical recommendations. These are based on our review of the information provided and will be discussed in detail for all parties to understand our approach and recommendation. But. Do not yet have agreement. In the General County Class for Demo Building Code. This project provides funding for the health officer to abate health and safety hazards and nuisances. This project provides funding for the health officer to abate health and safety hazards and nuisances. The building official to institute repairs or demolition of unsafe structure and the abatement of zoning violations when permitted by an order of the court. The average annual expenditure for FY eighteen to FY twenty-one for this project was fifty-seven thousand dollars. As of May twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-one, the available project balance was two hundred and three thousand dollars. The FY twenty-two request is two hundred thousand dollars. And the program request is two hundred thousand dollars annually, FY twenty-three through FY twenty-seven. Based on the defined need, historical expenditures, and the available balance, we recommend deleting the FY twenty-two request of two hundred thousand dollars and reducing each program year request by fifty thousand dollars. This reduction would leave two hundred and three thousand dollars available for spending in the project and program future years at one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. A similar recommendation was made during the FY twenty-one budget review, and the county council approved the reduction. However, the administration reinstated the prior year requests before program reductions. We recommend deleting FY twenty-two PGO of two hundred thousand dollars, reduce FY twenty-three through FY twenty-seven PGO by fifty thousand dollars each fiscal year. For the Agricultural Preservation Program. This project provides funding for the purchase of agricultural easements or fee simple interest in accordance with the county and state agricultural and woodland preservation programs. As of May thirty-first, twenty-twenty-one, the available project balance was four million three hundred and forty-four thousand six hundred dollars. The FY twenty-two request for two million one hundred and seventy thousand dollars includes one point nine million dollars in bonds. Currently, there are two applications that have been accepted that have accepted the offer presented to them while another five applications are being considered. The two applications that have been accepted are Maryland Agricultural Land Preservation Foundation, MAF, applications from FY twenty. For FY twenty-one, there are five applications which include one rural legacy application, one MAF application, and three county applications. Based on the defined need for all applications and factoring in the state funding for MAF applications, this will leave an additional prior approved balance of nine hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. We recommend reducing FY twenty-two bonds by eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. This reduction leaves the county with two million three hundred and thirteen thousand dollars, which is one hundred and forty-three thousand dollars more than the requested amount of two million one hundred and seventy thousand dollars. For the Failed Sewage and Private Well Fund. This project provides funding in case of financial hardships to subsidize the cost of repairing failed residential sewage disposal systems or private wells to install holding tanks or water treatment systems. The project can also be used by the help officer to provide funding for immediate health hazards and for laboratory outreach and other services required to assess public health issues related to private wells, septic systems, water treatment systems, recreational water quality, and groundwater quality and quantity. The average annual expenditure for FY eighteen to FY twenty-one for this project was forty-one thousand dollars. As of May twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-one, the available project balance was one hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars. The FY twenty-two request is eighty thousand dollars, and the program request is eighty thousand dollars annually. FY twenty-three through FY twenty-seven. Based on the defined need, historical expenditures, and the available balance, we recommend deleting the FY twenty-two request of eighty thousand dollars. We recommend eliminating FY twenty-two PGO of eighty thousand dollars. Woodland Beach Volunteer Fire Station Relocation. This project will provide a county contribution toward the relocation of the Woodland Beach Volunteer Fire Station. This contribution will assist the Woodland Beach Volunteer Company in funding the acquisition of property. The FY twenty-two requested amount is one million dollars. However, the county did not receive any documentation supporting Woodland Beach Volunteer Fire Station's specific plans for acquiring this property. Based on the lack of documentation such as cost or funding structure, we recommend that FY twenty-two funding be pushed out to FY twenty-three. Police Training Academy. This project includes design and construction of new administration and fitness buildings. Site improvements include a running track, the creation of a scenario-based training complex, and renovations of the firearms building and pistol range of the existing Police Academy site in Davidsonville. Based on updated project costs, there are excess project funds totaling one hundred and twenty thousand dollars. We recommend deleting those funds from the project. We recommend reducing prior approved General County Bonds by one hundred and twenty thousand dollars. In the Recreation and Parks Class, South Shore Trail. This project is authorized to acquire property, design, and construct a paved multi-use trail primarily utilizing the abandoned roadbed of the WBNA railroad between Annapolis and Odenton. The trail will connect with the Colonial Annapolis Maritime Trail on the east and the WBNA Trail on the west. The prior approved budget exceeds the total cost estimate by about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The administration adequately justified the need of excess funds except for forty-two thousand dollars, which they explained would be used for right-of-way and land acquisitions for Phase Two, which is Maryland Route Three to Odenton, but that was already included in the cost estimate. We recommend eliminating the excess funds from the FY twenty-two budget request. We recommend reducing FY twenty-two bonds by forty-two thousand dollars. Greenways, Parkland, and Open Space. This project establishes a fund for countywide greenway, parkland, and open space acquisitions related to expenses. The county bonds that fund related overhead five percent and acquisition expenses not covered by the program Open Space Acquisition and Other Grant Funding five percent remains at eleven percent in the FY twenty-two request and the capital program. As of May thirty-first, twenty-twenty-one, no expenditures have been made from the two million five hundred and fourteen thousand six hundred and ninety-seven dollar available budget of county bonds. Therefore, we recommend reducing the county bonds back to the percentage it was in FY nineteen, which was seven percent. We recommend reducing FY twenty-two to twenty-seven county bonds by one hundred thousand dollars each fiscal year. Broadneck Peninsula Trail. This project authorizes the design, right-of-way acquisitions, and construction of a paved multi-use trail running from Sandy Point State Park to the BNA Trail. The administration's latest construction cost estimates for completing the Broadneck Trail Phase One B College Parkway East to Bayhead Park, Phase Three Peninsula Farm Road to Baydale Drive, and Phase Five Bayhead Park to Sandy Point State Park, and Community Connector Trails totaled seven hundred and sixty-two thousand and five hundred dollars, which is forty-six thousand dollars less than the construction contract budget. We recommend reducing the FY twenty-two bonds by forty-six thousand dollars. Brooklyn Heights Teen Center. This project is to revitalize and repurpose Brooklyn Heights Park located at one-eleven East Eleventh Avenue. This one-time standalone project provides county funding for the design of the teen center. The funding for the construction of the teen center is to come from funds by external partners. The FY twenty-two request of nine hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars is for the design of the teen center. However, the administration has been unable to find partners for the construction of the teen center after the Partnership for Children Youth and Family decided not to move forward with this project last year. We recommend that FY twenty-two funding be pushed to FY twenty-three to allow the administration time to secure partners as it is better to design closer to the time of construction. A Environmental Education Center. This new project proposes to design and construct an environmental education and research center along the Patuxent River with the Jug Bay Wetland Sanctuary. The FY twenty-two request includes two other state grants totaling one point seven million dollars. However, one of the state grants was approved in April twenty-twenty-one for forty-nine thousand dollars more than estimated. We recommend reducing FY twenty-two bonds and increasing FY twenty-two other state grants for the same amount. If the council chooses to replace the funding for this project, the administration will need to request a forty-nine thousand dollar other state grant increase in the supplemental budget. Arundel Swim Center renovation. This project includes repairs and rehabilitation to the Arundel Swim Center on Weaver Road in Annapolis. According to the administration, Phase Two is completed and Phase Three is in performance phase, and any remaining funds have or will be moved to Phase Four to cover any needed design change orders to address electrical system and panel issues during construction. However, along with moving funds to Phase Four, the prior approved budgeted construction funds exceeded the estimate by one hundred and sixty thousand dollars. We recommend eliminating fifty thousand dollars of the excess budget. This leaves one hundred and ten thousand dollars of the excess funds for contingencies. Now for the Drudging Class. Waterway Dredge Placement. This project provides material placement capacity for dredged material from the miscellaneous waterway dredging projects in the county. The administration revised the project cost for tasks currently planned, resulting in excess project funding. We recommend reducing project funds by one hundred and seventy thousand dollars, which provides for an additional fifty thousand dollars in the project for future monitoring activities. We recommend reducing prior approved General County Bonds by one hundred and seventy thousand dollars. In the Watershed Protection and Restoration Class. Storm Drainage SWM Infrastructure. This project involves a study, design, and construction of large regional storm drain systems and stormwater management infrastructure to relieve widespread ponding or flooding of public and private properties and existing public infrastructure. This project also involves repair, rehabilitation, and replacement of major culverts that are beyond their useful life. The average annual expenditures for FY seventeen to FY twenty for this project was four hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. The administration's planned spending in FY twenty-two is for the completion of five storm drains and for the Jabes Branch Three Stream Restoration. As of May twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-one, the available project balance was six million two hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars based on the defined need, historical expenditures, and the available balance. We recommend addition, the administration has built in contingencies within their latest cost estimates, and they are also retaining an unidentified one million two hundred and nine thousand dollars in reserve that has been set aside to accommodate future construction contracts or to transfer to projects with insufficient funding in a future budget cycle. We recommend reducing the prior approved WPRF bonds by one point two million to release the excess reserve. Therefore, we recommend reducing FY twenty-two WPRF bonds of one million dollars and reducing prior approved WPRF bonds by one point two million dollars. In the Wastewater Class. WRF Infrastructure Upgrade. This project provides for design and construction to upgrade various wastewater system infrastructure, including structures and equipment to meet current control and operational standards. The average annual expenditure from FY seventeen to FY twenty for this project was seven hundred and five thousand. As of May twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-one, the available project balance was two million seventy-eight thousand, and the FY twenty-two request is one million dollars. Based on the defined need, historical expenditures, and the available balance, we recommend deleting the FY twenty-two request of one million dollars. This reduction would leave two million and seventy-eight thousand dollars available for spending in the project. We recommend reducing FY twenty-two wastewater bonds by one million dollars. Grinder Pump Replacement. This project provides for a multi-year sewer infrastructure investigation, rehabilitation, and replacement program to ensure the adequacy of the county's wastewater collection system. Aging infrastructure and changes to manufacturing and design standards have resulted in some existing low-pressure force main areas exhibiting lower overall The highest annual spend from FY nineteen to FY twenty-one for this project was two hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars. As of May twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-one, the available project balance was one million one hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars, and the FY twenty-two request is five hundred thousand. Based on the defined need, historical expenditures, and the available balance, we recommend deleting the FY twenty-two request of five hundred thousand dollars. This reduction would leave one million one hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars available for spending in the project. We recommend deleting FY twenty-two wastewater PGO of five hundred thousand dollars. Routine Sewer Extensions. This project provides for designing extensions, land acquisition, and construction of minor extensions to the existing sewer system as petitioned by residents or determined necessary as an integral requirement of CIP road improvements that accommodate the road design and/or avoids future excavation of the new road infrastructure. Annual spend from FY seventeen to FY twenty-one for this project was eighty-four thousand dollars. As of May twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-one, the available project balance was eight hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars, and the FY twenty-two request is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Based on the defined need, historical expenditures, and the available balance, we recommend deleting the FY twenty-two request of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. This reduction would leave eight hundred and fifty-five thousand available for spending in the project. We recommend deleting FY twenty-two wastewater bonds of two hundred and fifty thousand. Now in the Water Class, WTR Infrastructure Upgrade. This project is for design and construction to upgrade various water system infrastructure, including structures and equipment to meet current control and operational standards. As of May twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-one, the available project balance was one million seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The administration is requesting an additional one million six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in FY twenty-two. The average annual expenditures from FY eighteen to FY twenty is two hundred and seventy thousand dollars. The administration has built in contingencies within their latest cost estimates, and they are also retaining an unidentified one point six million in reserve that has been set aside to accommodate future construction costs or to transfer to projects with insufficient funding in a future budget cycle. We recommend reducing the FY twenty-two water bonds by one point six million dollars to release the excess reserve. We recommend reducing FY twenty-two water bonds by one million six hundred dollars. So that has reached the end of the presentation. I do want to draw a reference to a couple of appendix appendices that we have attached. In Appendix A, we have included a list of grants for FY nineteen, FY twenty, FY twenty-one, and FY twenty-two to show you the budgeted community grants for that time period. In addition, we included the cultural, teen, maintenance, and capital and other grants that are in other parts of the budget that resemble community grants. Most of the grants in the last category are included in the capital budget and funded by PGO. I advise that grants to the community organizations should be in the operating budget. According to the budget policy, the capital budget is used for acquisition or development of major capital improvements. These smaller grants to outside community organizations for their capital improvements do not meet that definition. As previously mentioned, Appendix B is a summary of new positions. Appendix C is a summary by department of the proposed operating recommendations. And Appendix D is a summary of the proposed capital recommendations. I would like to thank the council for listening patiently to our presentation, and I hope you'll consider our recommendations. It has been another interesting budget year, as is all with twenty-twenty-one, but I think this presentation and our recommendations show the end result of the hard work of many people involved in the process. So I again commend my team for stepping up to get the job done. I would like to thank the administration for their support and mutual goal to have this be a more collaborative process. I believe the result of that work provides you with a better product. Our goal is to provide the council with the information you need to make the difficult policy decisions ahead. But I think the level of agreement that you have to continue that work this year will hopefully improve the process for everyone. I am ready to answer any questions that you may have, and we look forward to supporting you as we continue through the budget process to get the best possible FY twenty-two budget for Anarundel County. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam Auditor. That was an excellent presentation, and thank you to your entire team on behalf of the entire council. We will now take questions. Does anyone have a question for Madam Auditor? My colleagues continue to surprise me. Of being such a quiet bunch, I expected lots of questions. No? Okay, if, if there are none, then we will stand on recess until the administration is ready to return with its rebuttal.
Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes, Mr. Trembauer.
Thank you, Chris Trembauer, Budget Officer. So I think, i-if I could suggest that we reconvene at noon, I think we will have a very short rebuttal and get you all about the rest of your day very shortly after that. Does that work for the council?
It would be my personal preference to stick with one o'clock since that's the time that we already have and for having planned my day around one o'clock.
We will take that time, and we will make our rebuttal even shorter with the extra time to prepare. How about that?
Excellent. Okay, well, thank you, everyone. See you later. Okay, good afternoon. Since it is one o'clock, we are going to come back from our recess and hear the administration's rebuttal to our auditor's recommendations. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Ms. Lacy.
Present.
Ms. Pickard.
Present.
Mr. Volkey. Mr. Kruisky.
Still here.
Ms. Fiedler.
Present.
Ms. Ravian.
Present.
Ms. Hare.
Present.
Ms. Bowler, our county auditor.
Present.
Madam Chair, we are, we have six council members. We're still waiting on Mr. Volkey, and we have our county auditor in attendance.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Uh, and in case anyone was wondering from earlier this morning, this is apparently not sort of meeting where we need to read our open meetings act statement um and our ethics statement verbatim. But of course, everyone's heard them many times. They are available on the website to be reviewed should you have any questions. With that, Mr. Trump.
Thank you, Madam Chair, uh Chris Trump, our county budget officer. Um, pleased to be with you today to offer the administration rebuttal. Uh, but before I get into the specifics, uh I do wanna take a moment to thank uh the auditor, Ms. Bowler. I thought she did a fantastic job with her presentation, and I wanna particularly uh um thank her for the collaborative spirit in which both of our offices have worked over the last thirty days and actually well beyond that, I think. Um, I hope the council appreciates that this has been a very, uh, I think, productive process. And that will be reflected uh shortly when I go through the cuts and agree with a lot of them. So um, kudos to the auditor staff. Uh, and um, I'd also like to take a moment to acknowledge the budget office staff. Um, most of our work is done before April thirtieth, but uh we we didn't go away after the budget is introduced. And we've been working in support of uh the auditor and also council requests as well. So um, thanks to my whole team. And that, uh, I will get into the rebuttal. I believe that you should have um shared with you our operating rebuttal. Uh, I sent that to Madam Administrator a few minutes ago. Um, so I'm gonna go through these and I'll reference the auditor slide number. Uh, and I'll keep it brief, but if you want to stop me at any time um with questions, uh, I will do my best uh to answer them. Uh, so we'll start uh at the best place, which is the beginning. Um, in central services, the auditor recommended uh four cuts on slide number nineteen and twenty. Uh, we are okay with all of these cuts. I do wanna provide one caveat that the um cut to seventy-five oh one in central services, the two hundred thousand dollar cut is a one-time cut. So although we're okay with that cut, I would caution the council that if you take that cut, um, please do not apply it to any recurring costs because that is a one-time expense. Moving on, on auditor slide number twenty-one, the Office of Finance, non-departmental. Uh, we're okay with that hundred forty-five thousand dollar cut. Um, the Office of Transportation cut on auditor slide twenty-two. Uh, we're gonna disagree with this one. The recommendation was for a three hundred thousand dollar cut um based on the current contract, but we have actually just provided to the auditor's office uh clarification that um we need the full three point three million dollars. So I hope that the auditor's office will look at that and agree with our rebuttal. Um, we're asking you not to take that cut um to transportation. On auditor slide twenty-three, DPW, uh, this was a recommended cut on the streetlights. So uh, we're gonna ask you not to take this cut either. It was for a hundred thousand dollars. Um, the budget office, we already took a recurring cut from this line item based on the history and the trend, and we feel that that's appropriate. Um, since the recommendation, we've consulted with our friends in DPW, and they uh believe if we take this cut, it might impact their ability uh to keep the program of streetlight replacements on track. Um, so we ask you not to take this cut as well. Um, the next one on auditor slide twenty-four is for wrecked parks. Uh, the auditor recommended a ninety-five thousand dollar cut based on the historical spend, and we're willing to work with you here. Um, we will accept forty-five thousand dollar cut, but we'd ask you to leave in the other fifty. Um, although we agree with the auditor's assessment based on the calculations, we know that there's been more programs added to wrecked parks, and uh if we were to take this entire cut, um, we're worried that it would impact their ability uh to do that. So we would ask not to take this one. For slide number twenty-five in the fire department, this is the FICA calculation cut. We're fine with that, thirty-two thousand. Um, next one is detention center on slide twenty-six. Uh, auditor recommended a four hundred thousand dollar cut based on turnover. We've consulted with the department and looked at our calculations again. We're, we're not comfortable with that. But in the spirit of collaboration, we're willing to work with you. And um if we base our turnover um on the five percent number, then we'd be comfortable with a one hundred sixty-seven point seven thousand dollar cut. So we'll partially agree to that and take the one sixty-seven point seven. Uh, the other tension detention center cut um on page twenty-seven uh for twenty-five thousand for the management services. We're okay with that. Uh, on slide number twenty-eight, uh, auditor recommended um restricting funds to the library. Um, we've actually got uh Mr. Ald with us, I believe. He would like to speak to that one since the library is a component unit. So Ms. Corby, if it's possible to let um Mr. Ald in, the administration would ask him to speak to that recommendation.
We should be here any moment.
Uh, yes, thank you very much. Um, council members and um Madam Auditor. We have been working for several months on a memorandum of understanding between the Anarongo County Public Library Board of Trustees and the AACPL Foundation Board of Directors. These two boards will vote on the M- the MOU at their meetings in September and October, and it will be finalized by the end of October. That's my, that's my point. Thank you.
Great. Chris Trump, our budget officer. Thank you, Mr. Ald. Um, if there's no other questions for Mr. Ald, I think I can proceed with the rest of my rebuttal or.
Go ahead, Mr. Trump. Thank you, Mr. Ald.
Yes, thank you.
Great. Thank, thanks, Madam Chair. Uh, again, Chris Trump, our county budget officer. Um, so the, the final um general fund operating recommendation was sixty-eight thousand dollars from the sheriff department. We agree that was a calculation error with the PSC, so we're okay with that. Um, so our, our total general funds, uh, the auditor had recommended uh two point two million dollars of cuts. Uh, we're agreeing with about one point one million uh with the asterisk that two hundred thousand of that is the one-time cut. So that would leave you with nine hundred and four thousand seven hundred dollars in recurring um s- uh, based on Madam Auditor's recommendations. A couple more quick uh things to run through with the enterprise funds. Um, on childcare, uh, Madam Auditor made three recommendations on pages thirty and thirty-one. We are okay with all of those recommendations, so that would be a total cut of two hundred and seven thousand dollars. Uh, on page thirty, or on slide thirty-two with the Circuit Court Grant Fund, we're okay with that cut of a hundred and eighty-one. Um, the next two on pages thirty-three and thirty-four are for DPW solid waste. Uh, where the administration disagrees with those cuts. Um, the fifty thousand dollar turnover cut, um, we think the vacancy rate is unusually high at this point in the Bureau of Waste Management Services. Uh, we expect them to be able to hire, and we would recommend against this turnover cut of fifty thousand. As far as the um three hundred thousand dollar cuts to item eighty-seven twenty-one, uh, this is in essence the contingency fund for emergency use, but it's unlike um the, the CIO contingency fund and the general fund that this really is only for the enterprise fund, and there are situations that come up that um need funding and three hundred thousand dollars, I don't think is um, you know, is, is too much to have in there to cover those unforeseen expenses. It's really only half a percent of the fund, and because it can only be spent within that special fund, um, we would disagree with the, the auditor's policy recommendation that um all of that type of s- spend would come to the council for approval. Uh, we'd be happy to discuss that further if you'd like, but the administration would ask you to decline um this recommendation. On slide thirty-five is the debt service sinking fund in DPW. That's two hundred thirty thousand dollars, and we're okay with that. Um, slide thirty-six is a similar um contingency policy cut for DPW utility operating, and we would oppose that um for the same rationale as I discussed uh with solid waste. Um, so that concludes our operating rebuttal, and I think before I move on to capital, I pause in case you guys have any questions.
I'm not seeing any questions, Mr. Trump.
Fantastic. This group is ready to move, and I'm all for it. So uh, now I'm gonna move through capital. There were considerable more amount of recommendations on this. Um, fortunately for everybody, we agreed with the vast majority, so I'm gonna move quickly. Um, and unless there's any objections, I can kinda take them by batch. Uh, so I'm, you should have very recently received uh these as well um in a PDF form that has, has a listing. Um, I don't unfortunately have the auditor slide number for these, but um I'll do my best to orient you. Um, so the, the first batch that we're gonna take are the board of amendments, and these are these begin on auditor slide forty, and we, we agree with all of these recommendations. Um, so they begin with Ald A.K. and Pre-K and go all the way down to Crofton Area High School, and administration supports them as a batch. Next, we have the jumpers road improvements. Um, we're okay with that. Um, similarly with Maryland two fourteen and Lock Haven Road, uh, we're okay with that cut. For Route Two and Route Three improvements, we're okay with those cuts. And we're also signing off on the Oakwood, Old Mill Boulevard, and Pleasant Plains Road safety improvement cuts. Duval outing access improvement, um, we're okay with that. And as well, the Reva Road at government, Governor Bridge Road and the Annapolis Community Library, we're okay with those. And before you think that we're just generally too agreeable and we agree with everything, that brings us to shoreline erosion, which the administration would respectfully ask you to not take. That was a recommendation for four hundred fifty thousand dollar cut. Um, and this would impact the department's ability to do the Spriggs Shoreline Project. Um, so we would ask you not to take this fund, uh, take this funding, so please reject that four hundred fifty thousand dollar cut to wrecked parks. The other wrecked parks recommendations for Randazzo Fields Quiet Waters Retreat, we're okay with those cuts as well with Shipley Choice Dam Rehab. Um, so the next one that I'm gonna ask you to disagree with is the Franklin Manor dredging. So there was a recommendation to cut a hundred ninety thousand dollars from this project. Uh, I think that was based on the DPW's most recent bids um that were lower than the engineer's expert estimate, but we're asking you to not take that cut. It's too early in the process. And uh materials and engineering costs have been increasing, so we would advise that that cut is premature to take at this time. If we get further through the project, um, and it turns out that there are cost savings, then of course, um, we would uh seek to recognize that uh at a future time, but we don't wanna tie the department's hands at this point. Okay, next, we have um a series of amendments on other DPW projects. Uh, we're okay with all of those. I'll list them for the record. Then Mathias Cove and Main Creek dredging, we're okay with that. Um, we're okay with the WPRF project uh SO dash PC dash O one, and then the Subcell nine point two Broad Creek uh Water Treatment Plant, Danbury Waste uh Management Extension Demo. Oh, sorry, we're okay with all those. Then switching over to health, the demo building code four hundred fifty thousand, we're gonna sign off on that. We're okay with that. We're okay with the cut to ag preservation, and we're also okay with the eighty thousand dollars of uh failed sewage. Cut. So for Woodland Beach, um, I believe the recommendation was to delay that a year. Uh, the council could certainly do that if it wanted to. Uh, it's, it's possible that we are that we wouldn't be able to move on that this year. Uh, we just wanna preserve the funding in there to allow um that volunteer department to relocate at the proper time. Uh, so if you wanna delay it a year, um, that's okay. If you're keeping track on your sh- cheat sheet, we're now at Police Trading Academy, which I believe is slide sixty-five uh from the auditor's presentation. We're asking you not to take this cut for a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. We're current currently in the process of receiving bids on phase two, and it'd be premature to reduce the funds prior to that, especially with um the, the aforementioned uh increase in costs for steel lumber and other construction material. Okay, moving into some wrecked parks projects again, the South Shore Trail is a recommendation to cut forty-two thousand dollars. Uh, we'd ask you to reject this recommendation as well. Uh, we need these additional funds to hire a third-party real estate attorney to sort out the boundary issues um for the easements on the South Shore Trail, and we don't wanna derail that project as it is a priority. Um, we are okay with the Greenways um Parkland and Open Space funding cut of uh a total of six hundred thousand uh to recognize the reduction in overhead. However, I just wanna point out that uh very recently we've received notification from the state that we will be receiving additional um state funding for program open space, so we will incorporate that in a supplemental amendment. So we'll agree to this cut, but you'll also see a different funding source to add back in. So that's on both sides of the tape there. On Broadneck Peninsula Trail, this is a modest cut of forty-six thousand, but we disagree with this, and we'd ask you to reject it. We need the um ongoing funds for right-of-way and easement negotiations. The real estate market is pretty hot right now, so we wouldn't wanna tie the department's hands as they look to get these important easements underway to keep up the progress on this trail. Uh, the rest of the um wrecked parks recommendations, we're okay with Brooklyn Heights Teen Center, Drug Bay Environmental Education Center, Arundel Swim Center Reno. We are okay with all of those cuts um or recommendations. The Waterway Dredge Placement Recommendation, hundred seventy thousand, we're okay with that. Um, okay, getting into, I believe these are WPRF projects. Um, storm drainage and stormwater management infrastructure. This is a two point two million dollar recommendation that we disagree with. We'd ask you to reject that. The one point two million of this has been uh designated for coordination on a retrofit project that's associated with the Monterey Avenue Project. So uh this needs to be retained. Uh, the next one, I think we may be on slide seventy-one or thereabouts of the auditor presentation um for WRF infrastructure um upgrade and retrofits. Uh, that's a million dollars that we're gonna ask you not to take that cut either. Um, we have a defined need for the spending of this million dollars, and they'll be used to fund construction for um Annapolis uh WRF, WRF Electrical and Emergency Power Upgrade and Broadneck uh Waste Activated Sludge Pump Replacement. So both those projects are in design. They're anticipated to be bid um by July, and we do not want to um lose that funding. We're okay with the grinder pump replacement cut of five hundred thousand, but on the routine sewer extensions um recommendation of two hundred fifty thousand, we're gonna ask you not to take that cut. Um, these are uh funding our studies for sewer petition projects. So historical spending has been lower, but um as I think the council appreciates, the department has a new program for subject-to-sewer connection, and we anticipate an expansion and a greater interest. And so we would urge you not to take these funds um at this time. For WTR infrastructure upgrade, uh, that's one point six million. We'd ask you to disagree with that. Um, this covers a number of smaller builder infrastructure projects, and taking this funding could result in a delay of these projects, um, and we would not like to see that happen. Um, the department sent us a lot more justification for this, which I'd be happy to provide uh the council as well. Um, so that is all on my list. I think I may have to bounce back to something else. Let me check with Naomi. Did I get through everything, Naomi, or do I need to go back to the other list? She's telling me we got through everything. Um, so that was a long time of listening to me and hearing our rebuttal, but the, you know, the take-home point here is I think the auditor did uh very good work. We have been to many of her recommendations, and we'd be happy to provide more detail to the council or the auditor's office for those instances that we disagreed. Um, with that, I will take any questions that you may have.
Are there any questions?
It's not looking like it, Mr. Trumbauer.
Fantastic. Well, Madam Chair, Madam Auditor, and the rest of the council, the Budget Office stands ready to work with you over the next week on crafting amendments and striking a good budget for the residents of Anarongo County.
Thank you. Likewise. Okay, I have to find my script. Is there any other business to be brought before the county council at this time? Seeing and hearing none, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, Allison Pickard.
And a second?
Second, Councilman Fruisky.
All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. The county council is adjourned until six PM on Monday, June seventh, twenty twenty.